We're going to start tonight's meeting at 6:02. Can I get someone to make a motion to the agenda, please?
I do. I move second.
Okay. All those in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstaining? Perfect. Communications with parents, citizens, and staff. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to us before we start with our meeting tonight? Hearing nothing, I'm going to say no, so we will continue on. Next item on our agenda tonight was the global ends interpretations. We are actually going to push those out to January because we're not quite ready yet for that stuff. But we will have it in January for you. All right, moving on. Governance process, lease for new driver's education vehicle. So we are looking for a motion to authorize Superintendent Sanchez to sign a lease paperwork for a new driver's education vehicle as budgeted, purchasing a Toyota 2024 Corolla Cross Hybrid to replace our Toyota Prius. New vehicle total cost $30,567, with our trade-in of $5,502 down payment. Financing $24,862 over five years at a rate of 6.04%. Is there a motion?
I move that we...
You moved the motion?
I moved the motion, yeah. Let's lease a new vehicle, or at least let's talk about it.
Yep.
I will second it.
And you'll second it. Discussion?
Just a minor point for anybody listening, you accidentally said $2 down payment, which would have been...
Oh, sorry, $200, yeah. That's just, yeah, my mistake. Sorry.
$200 is a pretty good deal, but two be...
I know, it was a $2 down pay... I know, right? My apologies. Any discussion?
Just a curiosity, how long did the past lease go for?
What year was our Toyota Prius? Or what is that? Is it a 19? I think it's a 19. So it's like five years.
Five years.
Yeah.
No, we've exceeded our lease by at least two years, and a lease for five.
So then it's like, okay.
Seven minus 24.
All right, so like a 2017.
Yeah.
Okay.
So...
I love how you do the small math and she does the big math.
I know, she does the big math, I know. We complement each other well.
I appreciate that you took time out on that.
All right, there we go. So... Any other discussion? Too bad you guys won't be able to drive it, sorry. So...
I have one question.
Sure.
I assume you guys have been through the whole thing of research. This is the best vehicle available. You did shopping around, the Best Buy, and I'm not sure how you came across deciding on this particular vehicle and pricing and all of that. Was there a committee who worked on it, or, you know? How does that... How did that play out?
There was not a committee, but yes, we did. So...
Okay.
The driver's ed teacher is the best person to make this decision. He did a lot of research. We had conversations with myself, Michael Ruffel, the high school principal, and Zach.
Okay.
And looked at different vehicles in different places, checked availability. And this one met our needs and timed them out.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to authorize Superintendent Sanchez to sign the lease paperwork for our new 2024 Toyota Corolla Cross Hybrid? Please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Abstaining? Okay, passes, thank you for that. Continued middle school model discussion. I think that that's just on there to keep me... To remind us, we will start having those committee meetings in January. So I don't think there's any need to discuss it tonight unless someone has something that they want to make sure that the committee knows. So, but I will entertain any discussion at this point on that if you want. Okay.
The one thing that I would add to it is that as we're presenting the budget information tonight, there is going to be a look forward of five years to each of the schools.
Okay.
So you'll be able to see enrollment at each of the schools along the way today, tonight.
Cool. All right. All right, so let's see. Oh, and we need to push out the appointment and finalizing the OV facilities committee membership. I haven't heard back from everybody. A couple of people asked for some extended time. So we'll authorize that in our first meeting in January and then start meetings shortly thereafter. Fiscal year 26 Otter Valley budget. Can I turn that over to you?
Yes. Colby, can you allow me to share, please?
Yep.
Which document will we be looking at? The budget or the survey responses?
They're going to be packaged together.
Packaged together, okay.
So let's see. Okay. So this presentation has at least two parts, three parts if you really want to get very, very in-depth. But the first part is really talking about the budget feedback, the budget survey feedback that we were able to compile thanks to Max and to all of those who helped us get the posters out and get the word out about completing the survey, the two weeks... Well, the week and a half before Thanksgiving and the time over Thanksgiving so that that way we would have some input along the way before a final budget is considered. So, okay. So, one of the things that you will always hear me come back to and you'll hear our principals come back to is that the reason why we're here are the students. And so we want to make sure that as we are talking about what is taking place with the students, we know that there are... There's a need to consider how much is in the budget. There's a need to consider who is in the budget. There's a need to consider future opportunities. But at the same time, we need to remember that we're doing this in the name of students. And so we need to make sure that we are looking at our students' needs as they are right now and as they exist into the future. So I am really happy that we were able to have over 200 responses to our survey during the two weeks, including 27 students. So we had over 100 parent caregivers and we had over 45 community members without families. So, and over 50 OVUU staff members, so that was great. Gives you an idea of who is contributing to our responses. So part of the survey, there were some questions where we asked the survey takers, did they find these things extremely important, very important, somewhat important, a little important, or not important at all? And so these graphs represent how they responded with the items, the columns on the far right meaning the most, the very important and the most extremely important. So these are the four in which the very important and the extremely important were the highest. And so providing a budget that serves the needs of the students in the community, providing social and emotional support to students, making sure that we're taking care of our buildings through maintenance and in the name of safety, and then also providing additional support and intervention for students who are struggling academically. So in addition to... In addition to the graphs that we showed, I wanted to make sure that we highlighted these top four. And you can see by the number in the parentheses how many people referred to them as very important or extremely important out of the 219 response providers. And so providing a budget that best serves the needs of the community. So right off the bat, we know that we have to balance the needs of the students and what the community is willing to pay for. So the next two slides are an analysis of the information that we received from open responses. So there's eight, I think, seven. So like, I believe, previous years, making sure that if we are... To look at our administration so that that way, or at least look at our administration and make sure that there is not any redundancy in the administrative positions and clearly making sure that people know what administration does so that that way they are aware of what the administration does for students. Academic and support services, making sure that we are providing opportunities for students to receive additional help outside of the classroom and also emphasis on smaller class sizes. And well, there's a couple of pieces that I think are very interesting there that that was not one of the items that was real, that of the top four in the original survey. And we'll talk a little bit more of what small class sizes mean, at least from the educational quality standards rubric. Making sure that we pay our staff and trying to figure out ways to lower health insurance costs or offer other benefits. Making sure that our facilities are not only maintained and upgraded, but making sure that our students are safe. This one I think we'll probably have to unpack a little bit more. You know, making sure that we are providing the all-around academic experience that students need for reading, writing, and arithmetic, but also making sure that they have access to extracurricular activities. But also we have to balance that, making sure that the extracurricular activities in clubs aren't prioritized over classrooms. Making sure that we're serving all students with number six equity and inclusion. And making sure the students who need that extra help get the help that they need. And then as far as other suggestions from the survey, making sure that we're looking at additional ways, not alternative ways, but additional ways that we can make sure that our students are learning, that they feel like they belong. And along the way, making sure that as we develop new ways of working within our system, that more people are involved in that, in the development, as well as the communication pathways and training if we do change anything. Yeah, and this is just a little bit of redundancy. The one thing that I want to make sure that we, that I highlight is number four, is that there's mixed reviews or mixed views on raising taxes. And after last year, it's clear that we have to be very conscious of that as we develop our budget and as we advertise our budget. Number five, educational focus. Making sure that our students have opportunities so that they can show their leadership and making sure that they have the ability to learn from others within the community. And then finally, making sure that our community has the opportunities to listen, but also to give feedback. We got to, we have to make sure that that is a two-way street so that that way we hear from them and we actually take advantage of the collective knowledge of our eight towns, both within the schools and for our students. So a couple of things, we could stop and have questions or we could move into the budget and then take all the questions at the end. Keep going.
Okay.
Okay. I think you want me?
Yes.
So just a reminder, this is the budget process and the timeline. We're right smack dab in the minute, in middle. And that we have received the tax letter. We did meet literally the day after the tax letter because we met on December 2nd. So a lot of that information, none of that information has changed. We've already reviewed it if there are more questions. But this time around, we have received information about long-term weighted average and other numbers. So we are able to provide a fuller budget. So this is kind of one of our guiding principles is your ends policy. The Otter Valley Unified Union School District exists so that all enrolled students are empowered with the knowledge, skills, and attributes needed to be successful and contributing citizens of a global society by way of resources invested by the community with focuses on academic proficiency, communication, critical thinking, and problem solving, good citizenship, learned agency, and well-being. So in October, you kind of gave us some parameters. You said we'd like you to maintain programs and focus on student needs, optimize class sizes, direct the Rutland Northeast Board members to look for cost savings at the Rutland Northeast level, maintain boards' ability to reduce staff if the budget should fail. And then maybe they should be switched. Present a budget that actually passes on top meeting day. Maybe they should have been switched. So kind of just to let you know what is included, kind of going over latterly. So we've taken a deep look and review of all programs, class sizes, and recommendations for reductions. Just so you know, our class sizes on average at the elementary level K to six are 1 to 16. You'll see fluctuations different school to school, but when you look at OVU, elementary schools as a whole. The seven through eight core class sizes is about 1 to 17. If you were to take the enrollment slides, which you'll see later, and divide it by the eight core teachers, it's a much higher number. But remember that at the middle and high school, we might have multiple math, multiple reading on each grade level. So the actual class sizes are lower. And the high school core classes are 1 to 13. And by the time you get to high school, you might have an AP, a 10th grade, and a remedial or, you know, more than even two grades, core classes. The Rutland Northeast budget does include one position for data manager to assure our data is correct. And it includes part-time consulting services to help tell our story of while supporting administrators to becoming system data savvy. Furthermore, any grant-funded positions without future funding will be reduced and/or eliminated. The reductions that we've made and presented in this budget were primarily through attrition or open positions. We did offer an early retirement buyout and we had five people, five teachers, take advantage of that. I think it was on your consent agenda. So the draft that we're presenting tonight is up 4.11%. Is it 3,000 degrees in here or is that me?
Yes.
It's warm. To note that when we presented earlier, Brenda, that if we had done a true level service budget, that it would have been six point...
Five, six, 6.65, something like that.
Like 6.5.
Over six. It's a whole number.
So already there, this is 2% lower.
Just to kind of remind you again of what we've seen in CPI trends and that we are really coming downward to more historical CPIs. And remember that that's cumulative, so it doesn't go backwards, right? So like the rises of 5, 8, and 3, almost 4%, we're all still paying for those at the grocery store, even though now they're going up 2.5 and maybe continuing to down. But that's just kind of some contextual reality of what we've gone through. So some budget facts that help put these very big numbers into context. That is that 1% on our budget is $268,000. One cent on our budget, based on the current adjusted yield and the long-term weighted average daily membership, the version one, is about $235,000. We've talked a lot about the new statewide yield and how it is adjusted for the statewide average CLA, which is 72%. So that means that yield has been adjusted down by 72%. So it means our dollar buys us less because it's trying to make our announced tax rate more comparable to where it really is as a state. And we'll talk more about that when we get to the specifics. Some of the program changes and updates. We spent a fair amount of time reviewing and talking about the Otter Valley pre-K programs from the time we met on December 2nd to today. We've received more surveys. And we now feel that about 111 students are committed to our programs, our in-house programs. Currently, we have 113 in-house programs. So we're recommending that we keep the program as is. So Barstow would be a 60%. Calverly would be, Lothrup would be 100%. There would be two 100% programs at Nashabie and one 100% program at Whiting. We did include some vouchers because we also do expect some students, some families are already sending their kids somewhere and they haven't had the ability to take a voucher, but we expect that they will likely keep their child where they are and pull down the voucher. So we did build in five vouchers per site. We were waiting for the study commission on UPK to see if they were going to make any recommendations to the legislature. And it was a very disappointing wait, much like the one that came out last night on the future of Vermont education, also very disappointing. They basically recommended what their charge was. Let's continue to look at offering more time for four-year-olds. Let's consider changing the waiting system because if you add them more time, they should get a higher weight in the funding formula. Let's consider a different methodology for paying private school providers. So in short, it didn't really change anything. A little bit of an aha moment for us was that we would, if our programs were under-enrolled, which they are a little bit right now, we would actually advertise. And I know that sounds simple to say, hey, why didn't you think of that before? But we didn't. And part of the reason I think we didn't is we were not used to being under-enrolled. And there are a lot of private providers that are going out of business. So we are hopeful and optimistic that building these programs and should we not have enrollment, advertising for enrollment, we can fill them. So there are no changes to preschool. The budget includes cost of living adjustments for salaries for our employees. Just a reminder, the teacher contract and then the educational support team, which is made up of paras, paraeducators, drivers, custodians, and bus monitors. So all transportation staff is currently under negotiations. Health insurance premiums have increased 11.9%. That number will not change before the time we set a budget, so that's the best we're going to have. It is subject to DFR's approval. And in the past, DFR has already always approved the V-HI rates. I can't promise that, but that's what we've seen historically. Vocational education has been updated based on the Stafford numbers, which we feel really confident in. They have finalized their budget. We have finalized their enrollment. We are not a member of the Hannaford Career Center, but students attend there. We have approximately six students, all part-time, or approximately three FTE that attend Hannaford. And we did put in a placeholder estimate on that. So that may change, but it shouldn't change drastically. The Rutland Northeast assessments have been put in here based on the first version of the long-term weighted average, which I fully expect to change. And at this point, I can't guarantee or guess how much that will change, but I do expect it to change. And then because we wanted to get down to being able to give you an estimate on tax rates, we had to calculate something for our revenues that are not raised by taxes. So we estimated that our tuition increase will be about 6%. We added 3% for the house license because that is based on CPI. The Burditt payment to the Burditt trust matches the Lothrup debt. The ELA trust, you'll remember, is now 3% of the value. It's the value as of December 31st, which I don't know yet. So I use June 30th as a placeholder. So these are the major changes. So we have, this budget does reflect reducing 3.9 elementary teachers. One at Lothrup, 1.4 at Nashabie, and 1.5 at OCA. It reduces 0.73 to open paraeducator positions, one at Nashabie and one at OCA, both part-time. It reduces one open contracted contractual Rutland Mental Health clinician. Again, it's already open, they haven't been able to fill it. Otter Valley, it reduces a net of one. There was a reduction of two teachers, a fax teacher and a business teacher, some reconfigurations, and an addition of a restorative practice professional. And then Otter Valley has also reduced some of their department budget lines by $25,000. $15,000 was just based on historic spending and $10,000 was prioritized for technology spending. It's reduced from Otter Valley because it was added to Rutland Northeast because technology spending is spent and deployed and managed at Rutland Northeast. Some of the additions, if you want to see, or we want to do any more conversations about pre-K, we do have a slideshow. This one's pretty long, so I'll wait unless you want to look at it later. Some of the additions, so as I said, we added five vouchers per elementary school. The pre-K amount is 3982, I rounded it up to 4,000. We have increased one-time purchases for new ELA English Language Arts curriculum and math curriculum, 30, just under $35,000 at Lothrup, 60 at Nashabie, $17,000 at OCA, and $9,000 at Otter Valley. That's only math at Otter Valley and middle school, right?
A little bit in sixth grade.
At the high school, the $9,000.
It's math at seventh and eighth in Otter Valley and then sixth grade in our elementary schools.
Right. The other thing that we have put in as a placeholder is we have one multilingual or English language learner teacher, kind of coordinator, really. And we don't know where her services will be needed because it will be dependent on schools and students. So as a placeholder, we put 1/5 into each of our sites. So Barstow has 20% and each of our schools on Otter Valley have another 20%. There are some requests here that were made by principals that we did not put into the budget. One was a middle school social-emotional learning alternative program teacher. One was a therapeutic case manager from Rutland Mental Health for Otter Valley Middle High School. Two floating substitutes for Otter Valley and Nashabie, one each, not two each. And 0.4 nurse at OCA bringing their currently, current three-day-a-week 60% position to full-time. One of the questions we were asked was to bring back the chart that shows our class sizes. These class sizes are classroom teachers. They don't include unified arts or interventionist. So this is Lothrup's with the reduction of one classroom teacher. They had a retirement. And we're just giving you a little highlight that we do recognize that grade two is one that could be potentially reduced more because it's a real small class. But it would go from being under our optimal to one student over our maximum. So it's one of those very odd conundrums of small schools. So there are 10 classroom teachers. Just for your information, there are two academic intervention. One is funded locally, one is funded in the Rutland Northeast budget from federal funds. There are 2.8 Unified Arts. Unified Arts are art, music, and world language. Well, and then there's world language. So art, music, PE, and world language. This is showing you all of the staff, budget to budget, at Lothrup. From teachers, paras, all of them, including custodians and principals. What's not included on this are the shared staff, special education services, which are at the central office, transportation services that are at the central office. The shared staff at Lothrup that are not included in this budget are pre-K and the ELL position that we just talked about. It's not, the FTE is not included on this grid. The money is included in the budget. Nashabie's class sizes, again, we have reduced one FTE classroom teacher and we've reduced a 0.4 PE. And we've reduced a 0.4 PE. So when we hired PE this year, we hired a 50 percent. We have, we have one and a 50 percent. We had in the budget one and a 90 percent position, so 40 percent was open. That position has been eliminated. That leaves us with 20 classroom teachers. We do recognize that some of the hardest numbers to predict is incoming kindergarten. We feel pretty comfortable with that 16. It actually matched Dr. Gripp's projection as well. But as you can see, having three teachers in Grade One, so we reduced there because it was a kindergarten teacher who retired. But having three teachers in Grade One is another teacher that's in reserve. It is still in the budget, but we do recognize that it is under our class size. In addition to the 20 classroom teachers, Nashabie has three academic interventionists. They are all funded with grants, federal funds. Three and a half Unified Arts teachers and one world language. Same thing. This is showing Nashabie's FTE. Oh, headings came off the top. Sorry about that. It's 26 first, 25 next, and then the difference. I'm sorry about that. The shared services that Nashabie is not included in this grid, but is included in the budget, are Triple E and ELL. Otter Creek Academy. So we have reduced one and a half teachers here. Half of it is an unfilled interventionist because we had seen that our enrollments were low and our kindergarten was four. So it's an open half position. And we reduced one just based on those class sizes. So how these may be reconfigured is still in flux because we are not exactly sure. Again, incoming kindergarten is our weakest link. I did pull the information today. It does look like we have solid 10 kids at our pre-K programs that are from Lester, Sudbury, and Whiting. So I can't promise, but it feels better than four, which we had this year. This leaves us with five classroom teachers. In addition to that, we have one academic interventionist. We have 1.2 Unified Arts. So their PE, their music, and their art, none of them are full-time. They're all part-time positions. And 0.2 world language. And this, again, is their staff grid, including all of the staff. It does not include pre-K, their ELL, the multilingual learning learner, the multilingual teacher, or library, because they share library with Barstow. Otter Valley. So you'll recall that we have one reduction in a professional, one net reduction in professional. These are the numbers by grade. We currently have 504 students. We are projecting 517 when you just age them up. We are cautious that that usually has never worked and that we really don't see them all age up. Some of them go a different avenue and don't make it on this grid. The different avenues that they might, so this grid is the students that are enrolled on October 1st. So the different avenues that would take them off this grid would be if they do early college, if they drop out, if they do school choice to another district, then they would come off this grid.
Barstow kids are not included on this grid, right?
Not at all. Well, yes, there are three Barstow tuition kids included on this grid. Because they pay tuition to come in. So they are included in those numbers because it's the number of students in the school enrolled on October 1st by grade. So there are eight middle school core academic. Core academics are math, ELA, science, and social studies. There are 18 high school core academics. There are three academic interventionists. There are eight and a half Unified Arts. Again, Unified Arts is PE, also includes help, the high school level, art and music. 3.8 world language. And then five other, which is tech, theater, driver's ed, Muslimu, and workplace learning. This is Otter Valley's grid. The things that are not included in this grid of services, of staff FTE, are the ELL and the world language because, one of the world language because they share a position with Barstow. So here's the budget, looking at it in two different angles. One by object, which is what we buy and where we put our monies. So again, the budget is going up, 1.1 million or 4.11 percent. 180 is going into salaries, 130 is going into benefits. The next biggest line is assessment, tuitions, and communications. Assessments of central office and vocational education.
Assessments, special ed?
Special ed, transportation, central office, technology, facilities, and vocational education. Supplies and materials, the biggest rise is because of those one-time curriculum investments that we talked about. And supplies also includes, because it is what you buy, not by department, it does include things like fuel, wood chips, facility-related supplies as well. And this is looking at the same budget, the same numbers by department. And so direct instruction, 370,000, that's elementary and high school. It does include preschool. Special education, 229,000. The next biggest one is you come down as fiscal services. Fiscal services also includes technology. So it's not just the business office. Facilities are all of our facilities. Transportation, obviously, is to and from school, but it also includes co-curricular transportation and field studies or field trips. So I don't know if you can read this. I'm gonna try to walk you through maybe the first one, which is Brandon's, to let you know what this means. So again...
Does Debbie have her laser pointer?
Do you?
I do.
We had some cats here.
Let's see if I know these.
That would spice up school working, having a cat too eligible.
So what am I pressing? First button.
Just don't aim it, please.
Oh, there we go. Okay, so the first column is this year. The second column is this proposal, the difference, et cetera. The last column is the state average. So here are the keys. This proposed budget is up 1.1 million, 4.11 percent. The revenues are fairly constant, which is wonderful. Because if it's not, like if you didn't put reserves or surplus funds into a reserve fund, then you would see spikes and valleys in this line. So that brings us to a net education spending of seven, 4 percent, 4.17. The state letter on December 1st estimated this number to be 7 percent. This number, long-term weighted average daily membership. Last year it was 2,123.13. This year, version one is projected at 1,978.08. That's down about 6.83 percent. I woke up this morning to a new version two and took a year off my life and the superintendent's life because there was an error in it and they had dropped all of our free and reduced kids, so our number plummeted.
14 something.
14,000, 1400 and something. And we figured it out. We have resubmitted our data, so it's correct. But it's calculated at the state level and we won't have an updated level. Hopefully, we will before we meet next, we will not before tomorrow. I think it's going to be closer to this. It could change, but I expect it to change minor. I do not expect it to change 600 kids like it did this morning. But I do expect it to change a little. This number, it's very important. They are no longer comparable. So I used to tell you that the 9,893 was the spending per pupil that raised a dollar in tax rates. That was true. 8,553, that's not the same formula anymore. Because the 8,553 has been reduced by the average statewide CLA of 72 percent. So this number, the 125 and the 162 are also no longer comparable. Because that 162 is intended, you said it well last time, I'll let you say it again. But it's intended to be a closer reflection of what taxpayers will really see based on CLAs, their own CLAs. But unfortunately, it is still adjusted by the town's individual CLA, unless that town like Sudbury is actually at 72 percent. And that's the only town that doesn't have a further adjustment on that $1.62. So while 125 to $1.62 is not comparable, the numbers on the bottom are comparable. So they are fairly comparable. As you can see, Brandon, so Brandon has 95 percent here. That means that Brandon is at about 68 percent CLA, 72 times 0.95. So their tax rate, $1.62, has been adjusted up for that difference. That means they're looking at approximately a 3 cent increase or a $1.68. The state estimates that the average CLA-adjusted tax rate will be $1.75. So we're falling in and out of the average, and it's 100 percent based on where CLAs are. So I think I shared with you last time, Goshen's adjusted to 81 percent because your real CLA is about 58 percent. So that increases your $1.62 to $1.99. Yours is the hardest and the biggest increase because it's 22 cents.
And it was last year as well.
It was. Lester is 14 cents, Pittsburgh is 10, Sudbury is 3. And Whiting's CLA is actually better than 72 percent, which is why this adjustment over here, wherever my little thing went, I think it died, is 108. So it gets brought down a little bit. Are there any questions on that? On the CLAs or on the whole thing? On the CLAs. I'll finish the rest before that, but just, did I?
Did Whiting have a reavow recently?
I'm not sure.
No, they have not.
No.
But they're...
But they're one of our smallest towns and it might mean that, and property values aren't skyrocketing like they are in other places.
It just means that their CLA is a little bit higher than that 70, whatever.
Two.
72 percent. And so that's why their tax rate's being adjusted downward.
So it's not 101?
It's 101 based on the 72 percent.
Okay.
Depends on what numbers you wanna look at.
Yeah, that's right.
So I, I don't apologize because I didn't do this crazy thing, but it does make it harder to explain to people. The one thing that is still important for us, the message that I'm not sure we delivered well last year, was this is the worst-case scenario. This is not what the average Vermonter pays. And we have information by town that says how many people are eligible for some type of household homestead rebate. And that's lesser than this. So you can't calculate that because it's based on personal information. So the only way for people to really estimate that is to go to the calculator.
However, the allowable amounts have lowered. So fewer families are qualifying for that than they used to. The numbers have changed.
Well, the numbers change every year. Last year they were 100 and...
It's become harder and harder.
Yeah, it's 128. So actually, the number's increased with the value.
Okay, I trust you, but I'm just saying we...
But it doesn't cover, so this is something that's probably true in Goshen. Your homestead is your house plus two acres.
Right.
If you own your house and 100 acres, it's only, the other 88 acres not covered by this number.
Right.
Right.
Did you mean 98 acres?
Yeah, I guess.
Just checking.
Small number.
Yesterday I told the Barstow board I've been doing this for 90 years.
You looked really good.
Thank you.
So one of the... Just feels like it. The 1381.73 number that we have right there right now is actually really good compared to the excess spending cutoff. It is almost $2,000 away from it.
Yes, the excess spending is 15,926. First thing this morning, we blew away by it, but yes, I'm coming back to that. It is 138. So we are almost 2,000, just shy of 2,000 below. And thank you, Renee. The other important number is that the last column on the state average. So the state average, the state anticipated average, because everyone's building their budgets right now, is the 14091. So the 13,800 is about $300, $200 less than the state average as well.
That's not good on this page.
It takes a minute sometimes. It's just this like delay. So to remind you, what's still not included and not available and what will change is one and two, those are my biggest concerns because I can't predict how much they're going to change. And I will remind you, there are five parts of the long-term weighted average ADM component. And so as any one of those change, the fluctuation can be more unpredictable. And how the long-term weighted average daily membership ends, where it ends, and by our policy, it's the Agency of Education's version, the closest version to December 31st, is how we split up the Rutland Northeast budget. So right now, it's based on the version one. I expect that to change. The Rutland Northeast budget is tomorrow night. They haven't finalized their budget yet, so that will happen tomorrow night. That may change as well. Vocational education, I feel pretty good about that number. We might see some slight changes in Hannaford, but I think not enough for us to really lose, not enough to take our breath away. Tuition costs are not finalized. I'll give you a number to set tuition next time, but that's not going to be enough to change it much. And then the common level of appraisals that we just talked about are preliminary. The real numbers usually come, honestly, the last week of December. There's an opportunity for select boards to appeal to those. So those numbers are not yet finalized either, and that will be adjusted in the future. Again, the intent of having the numbers early is that we won't see a drastic change because of that. So as we were putting this together, we talked about the things that we hope to answer for you. Questions for your consideration is, does this budget spending meet the district's stated priorities and or goals? Does the budget include class sizes that are within the district's class size policy and procedures and state guidelines? Does this budget allow the district to meet education quality standards and district quality standards? Are we appropriately addressing facility needs? Does proposed spending on staff costs, salaries, and benefits achieve the district's stated priorities or goals? How does our cost per pupil compare to other similar districts in our region? Can never do that until closer to the budget time, but we can do it based on the state's estimate. And how does this budget impact taxes in our community? So this is a new grid and was interesting to consider. This is some old data. There is a link out to the state. There are multiple years of this data. But it is a rubric to take the things that are defined in education quality standards and determine how you score, how we come up to that. And it's important to know that it's a bell curve. So if our numbers, like our class sizes, are too low, then five is the gold standard, it's the top of the bell curve. If, let's just take the top one, elementary teachers... If, let's just take the top one, elementary teachers, 11.25. If we have a student ratio of less than 11.25, then we have less than a five. If we have over 11.25, we have less than a five. So the five is the gold standard and then it fluctuates. It's important to know that the principal column is based on teachers, not students. So it's one principal per 7.5 teachers. It's important to know that the education teacher and the secondary teacher are all direct instruction teachers. So it does not include special education. It does not include library guidance or nurses. They're over on the side with their own numbers. It does not include, yes, that's it. It does include classroom teachers, all of the people that were on the grids that I showed you earlier. So it includes classroom teachers, unified arts, core teachers, specials at the high school, et cetera.
Certified interventionists.
Certified academic interventionists, yes.
They sit where? I'm sorry. In which column?
They would sit in the elementary or the secondary teacher.
Okay, got it.
Right? Whichever they use. Secondary by EQS is designed as seven, 7 through 12. So, I don't know if we can make this bigger or not. So we did them all together, so you can ignore ours still. There we go, that's a little better. So, gotta find my little thing. I think it died to me.
It's too much.
I think it's too much. So right here are our elementary schools, and then this is the high school, middle school. So the column is, over here, this is our enrollment. That's the same that matches the grid you saw previously. These are the FTEs, adding the teachers that we just talked about. At Lothrup, because we have 161 and 15.1 teachers, the staff to student ratio is 1 to 10.6. Nashaby is 1 to 11.89. Remember, the standard, the five, is 1 to 11.25, this top number. When we add them all together, all of OVA as a whole, we have 50 direct instruction teachers. We have an enrollment of 552. We have 1 to 1104. That's a pretty impressive number, 4.7 on a five-point scale. So we're pretty, you know, we're a little bit on the slight side, but right up close to the maximum. This one, we are way under. So what this is telling us is, because remember, this is telling us for every seven and a half teachers of those 50, you should have an administrator. An administrator includes the principal and the APs, and if we had Dean of Students, anyone in that administrative field. We have 1 to 12 and a half instead of 1 to 7 and a half. So we have a 1.9 score out of 5. And in that time, it's because we're over. We have, we service more students than the gold standard of 7 and a half. Or we service more, because it's not students, it's teachers there. Guidance, and this is important to understand, well, this is, overall, we are 1 to 138, and they say we should be 225. So they're saying for every 225 elementary children, you should have one guidance. So as you can see, just so you know, Lothrup has one guidance, Nashaby has two guidance, OCA has one guidance. So when you look at them collectively, we're over-guidenced, if you will. That's the one, score of one. Librarians, same thing, 1 to 235. This is licensed librarians. We do have some, well, at the high school, we have a licensed librarian and we also have a librarian assistant in this budget. Only the librarian is included in this number. So we have a score of 2.1 because, again, we're servicing on the high side. Our librarians are servicing more kids than the EQS standard says.
Not really.
Oh, no, other way around, sorry. 172 to 235. And then nurses, can't see that number. Can you read it from the slide?
Yeah, 1 to 212, 1 to 107, 12327, 1 to 161. So 1 to 212 is the last one there.
So 212 versus 375, so we're on the underside.
Except for nurses.
When you get to the high school, because we only have one, and we're servicing 517 kids, we still have a low rate, but it's because it's on the underside. So we're servicing more students than EQS should with our nurses. Same with our librarian, we're servicing more. Our guidance is a little bit closer towards the middle, but a little bit under. So we're a little bit over-guidenced as well. Principals, same problem as we had here at the elementary level. We have three in the admin team and 46.3 teachers. So 46.3 says we have 1 to 15 ratio. It's almost double of what EQS says it should be. Secondary teachers, also on the low side. Again, that's a simple 517 divided by the 46 teachers, gives us a ratio of 1 to 11.7. The gold standard is 14.06. So we've never done this before. We've never presented this information. It tells a story. Part of the story it tells is the smallness of Vermont and some of the challenges of, you know, honestly, finding a librarian to meet this 50-kid difference, right? Like, if we were to try to go to those standards, we would end up with so many part-time librarians. Finding and filling those positions could be a challenge, if not impossible. That holds true really for all of these. So I don't know if anyone has any questions or if I can answer.
I would add a little bit that these are-
Thank you.
So these numbers, the previous screen, I guess I'm the one who's driving, so, comes out of the Vermont snapshot. So we've talked about the snapshot in relation to academic proficiency already, but there's four other components that go along with it. One of them is staffing, our quality staffing. And so this is a, this is part of the rubric that was created originally, I think in 2018, but it's been updated since. But this is the, this is part of the, part of the accountability system that the Agency of Education submitted to the U.S. Department of Education in order to become compliant with the Elementary Secondary Success Act, or ESSA. So this is something that was created by the AOE. They probably had a contractor work on it. But, so this is, for whatever reason, at that time, the numbers that were presented as this is what high-quality education would look like in Vermont. And so we're presenting it more as informational than anything else. We're not saying that we need to get there, but because, as Brenda recognized, there are things here that would not be able to be accomplished because we can't find pieces of people.
And we wouldn't ever be able to build a school or schedules with pieces. So it's just a piece of the story, not the story.
Brenda, what's your question?
I have questions regarding the whole thing, not just-
Are we done?
Are we done?
Just the unfunded mandates.
Yeah. So in addition to that, right, to that is, one of the things that we're required to be mindful of is this list of legislation that has been enacted. The Vermont Superintendent's Association, the Vermont School Boards Association, and the Association of Business Managers are working together to kind of put this list together. Please understand, we're not saying these were bad acts or bad ideas. We're saying they were costly and they were not funded. And so there are some legislation, some acts that really happened, some things that are in statute, and some rules that were, rules and regulations. And that's kind of how it's broken down. I don't know if you have any questions on that, but again, I think it's part of the story that says, in addition to the facts that are easy, how many kids do we have in seats? We have education quality standards, we have legislation, we have rules, and then we have local priorities and board priorities that we are trying to all put together in creating the budget.
So I see these as very much like mission creep, that because it's just easier to go ahead and tell the schools, go ahead and do this, and, which is fine because we really should be doing it, but that adds hundreds of dollars to our cost for educating pupils that wouldn't necessarily be on there if we were not mandated to do it.
And some of these costs are taken off the top of the ed fund, so they affect the yield, and some of them are actually embedded into our budgets. So they affect our spending. They affect both ends of the equation. I think that's the last one.
Yeah, I think that's it.
Can I ask my question?
Sure.
Thanks, goodnight.
No, so I guess my question has to do with the four priorities from the survey, which included student supports, both academically and behaviorally, and the fact that most of the positions that have been eliminated by attrition have to do with student supports. And so I'm wondering what the impact of that is and whether or not schools are feeling, both administrators and staff, that they will be having, resenting this budget, that they will have enough staffing to address those priorities and support students in the ways that are needed. Even though I understand that they were not filled this year, however, should they just be eliminated or should they be considered differently?
So what I would, staffing does not always, or staffing alone, does not address student needs. So one of, so the positions that were listed there that are not, that are being ended through attrition, that particular, I guess, employee class, so all paraprofessionals, we are bringing them in for a two-day kind of paraprofessional university training where we're going to be working on teaching them, training them, to have the same approaches to students who have behavior and social-emotional issues. So that that way, whenever we are in a position that we're wondering what needs to happen, they're teaching and coaching the students rather than removing them from the classroom. Because, so that's number one. Number two, throughout the year during early release dates, we're going to continue that education. And so I think what I, so I am working to challenge the thought that students belong to other people within the system as opposed to belonging to all of us. And so, yes, when we're looking for opportunities to save money, we have to look for opportunities to save money. But we also have to be more proactive in making sure that we're working efficiently with the people that we do have.
And I totally trust that that is a part of the solution, is better training of the support staff. However, it is not always, the results we want don't always come from giving the most difficult children to the least trained or paid personnel, right? So there are other significant changes that need to happen that come through interventionists or through trained personnel that have specialty training, right? So I guess, and I see some of those positions are also not, have not been filled. And so I'm just, I'm just wondering about the full picture. I'm glad that we're looking at that because I think that that consistency definitely will improve results, but I'm also just trying to figure out the needs of the children. And statewide, this is a kind of a crisis right now, that we have all these needs in the schools that are being, that it's really difficult to fill. So I'm just, you know, and to solve. So I'm just trying to make sure that we're matching the positions of attrition, which have been really difficult to fill, with also those four priorities that the community has and that everybody is aware of, exist, right?
Yes. And the other piece that I would add too is, one of the reasons we are adding a data manager and then additional training for principals and other teacher leaders in the district for next year is so that we're looking at the data so that the, not just the day-to-day data, but the data going back so we can see how we got to today. Because if we're only looking at trying to solve the problems that are occurring in our classrooms today, we're never going to move beyond that day. And we're going to have to spend more money, we're going to have to hire more people that we can't find. So we really have to get underneath what has been happening longitudinally and also so that that way we can not just work on, you know, our paraprofessionals, but work on all of our staff together. So we have a lot of learning to do in order to make sure that all of our students have what they need to be successful. Debbie, Brenda, you want to add to that?
Well, one thing I'd like to add to it, 3.9 FTEs of the professionals that we reduced were because of class sizes. And remember, that was one of the goals you said to us. Maximize your class sizes. And so-
You're talking about classroom positions, teachers?
Yes.
Yeah, no, I wasn't talking about those.
The others were some library assistance, an open position.
There was an interventionist.
A halftime interventionist. But that was at OCA, a school of 64 kids. So it's always hard to-
Wrong direction.
Decipher between students with special education needs because they're not in this budget.
No, no, yeah, and I wasn't referring to that in particular. I was just looking at those four priorities and the first, you know, board concerns, you know, or board considerations. And I'm just trying to see if this answers that, you know, like, are people feeling, are you feeling, is everybody feeling that the presented budget does actually-
I think that-
Take the first consideration, puts the first consideration in place. Is this the right budget?
Interesting how you read the first consideration because I read it differently. Because I read the fifth consideration, we're just talking about class sizes, right?
Yeah.
So I look at supports a little bit differently than class sizes. And the majority or the biggest pieces of the reductions are in class sizes.
But that, to me, is not the problem. Class sizes, the class sizes that we're discussing are very adequate.
So you're concerned about the Ruttlin Mental Health position?
Right. The support positions that are-
Yeah, I might be able to help a little bit.
And I, again, I don't have enough information to answer that question, so I'm just giving you that question. You know, is that, are you feeling that those positions are going to be, what we have is enough?
If you, do you mind going to the slide, the one that shows sort of what we ended up keeping and then the positions that we-
The addition of reductions that we didn't-
Yes. Towards the end.
No, he's going the right way.
Yes, if you scroll down a little bit.
That's-
Okay. So if you, so basically, at Otter Valley especially, they had some positions, if you look at the one net reduction at Otter Valley, the fax position.
Yeah.
So that was a position that has sort of just not really had much traction recently. They couldn't fill it. It really, you know, you sort of look at what's being filled and what's not being filled. And they have not been able to fill the Ruttlin Mental Health positions also.
That's one that I was talking about.
Right.
As well as the student support staff at Nashaby.
Right. So let's, so we'll speak about OVA first. So I have a little bit of insight. I sit on the Ruttlin Mental Health Board. And every time, it's so hard, they can't hire anybody. It's just this ongoing piece in the area, there just are not enough people to hire. So what Michael did was sort of think a little differently and shift the funding around a little bit and instead go for the restorative practices- a little bit and instead go for the restorative practices person. So to be able to just think a little bit differently, still have another support person, um, to be able to fill that. So it wasn't in a way of sort of eliminating that. It was just sort of like, we still need support. We can't sort of use this funding or even get this position. So let's sort of try this route. Um, and we've had luck with, with that restorative practices position in the past. We had one that was S R funded, um, in the past. So that sort of like evened out, evened that out, if you will. Um, regarding the NASHBY position, that was a position, and correct me if I'm wrong, Brenda, but that was a position that, um, there were some decisions at the principal level that were made, um, this year as a matter of fact.
That we prioritize those funds.
Right. Right. Um, and they have a very solid, uh, I mean, I came right, you know that I came right out of the principal seat. Um, and we can always use, you know, more-
Yeah, and, and I'm, I'm, again, I wasn't asking for a defense. I was asking more for, are people feeling? Because I'm also looking at the two requests that are not included, SEL, alternative program teacher and therapeutic case manager. Again, we're dealing with a very specialized end of, of the staff. And so I'm just trying to ascertain with this, um, that people will be having the supports needed and that that's an agreement.
I think that Michael, when we left our meeting today, actually said that he understood that the therapeutic case manager, I understood coming out of our meeting today, that he was getting sort of the restorative practice professional and he understood he was not sort of, that's what I understood.
And that he was in lieu of-
Therapeutic case manager. He wasn't even expecting to see it on that list of requests not included. I'll just share that.
All right.
That's what I understood.
Well, and he also said, as every principal will say, what if you give it to me?
Of course, of course. So, yes.
I, I think that's the, the balance that is challenging is, um, you know. And I, I do think, like Debbie said, it's, it's better planning-wise if we know that we're not going to fill a relevant mental health position, for example, um, to, to repurpose those funds differently, like Michael had for the restorative practices. Because then you're at the right time of hiring and not the end of the hiring season.
Because he went, he, basically, we've gone the whole school year without, how long has he been without that position?
Oh, the FACS position?
No, without also the relevant mental health, that's been on his-
Oh, yeah, that's the whole school year, yeah.
Yeah, so that's been open the whole school year, so-
That's at NASHBY though, yes.
The mental health position, you can't fill it because there's no, or is it too much work for one person?
Staff isn't a variable.
There's no staff. Because they know the load that they're going to take on.
Because the pay is so terrible.
It is terrible.
That's why. Because they can't find professionals who will work for that rate. One more, oh, I just lost it. Never mind. It will come back to me. I had one-
I will say this, coming from the principal seat, I so appreciate those questions.
I did have one more, but now I've lost it.
Can we go back to OCA?
Do you have anyone online?
I can't see anybody, so I don't know.
I just want to make sure there was no one there that raised an hand that we didn't see. You can go wherever you'd like.
And thank you, by the way. I didn't mean to not start there.
No, they were really good questions.
Okay. So last meeting, we talked about the next year's first grade being only four. So we had asked the question as to what, so this looks like what you've decided is that based on 10 students coming in for kindergarten, that you'll do a K1 combined class? Is that what I'm seeing there?
Yep.
That is our first plan.
This is, this is the first plan.
And, and as far as, okay, I guess there were, I'm just curious if we're actually expecting 10, if I were to go back to that, uh, thing that-
Last year?
No, if I were to go back to, um, the presentation we had for our, um, incoming kids, would we actually see 10 from Sudbury, Whiting, Leicester for next year?
You're 100% right. That is a vulnerable number in every one of our schools as a kindergarten number. Um, I did look at just today before we came in while I've been diving into student counts. And there are 10 kids on the name, listed with names.
Okay.
And they are currently in the four-year-old program, either attending NASHBY or attending, um, the Whiting program, which are pre-K program, pre-K programs. Our pre-K are designed district-wide so they can go to NASHBY or to the Whiting program. And, um, and, and they're, that 10 number is good. One of the things that we have found as a, a problem for, uh, happening is that if they, if a preschool student went to NASHBY, then they wanted to do school choice into NASHBY.
Right.
And we've been working on our policy that that's not an automatic. If you're from the town of-
We, we did that last year.
Yeah.
That was the intention last year.
Oh, we didn't finish it?
Yes, we didn't finish it. But, uh, if you're from Leicester, Sudbury or Whiting, our policy now says you need to visit Leicester. And even tonight, Renee and I were talking about maybe a welcome night for Leicester to bring in all of their kids.
I'm sorry, can I clarify? You said we didn't finish that process?
Yeah, we did the safeguard for that.
We finished the process as to, it just meant that it was up to the superintendent to decide whether or not, but they had to visit Leicester before they could just say they wanted to go to NASHBY.
One of the things that happened with there, the, um, there was a rollover of from one year to the next. And because those students, those pre-K students were already enrolled in NASHBY, they stayed in NASHBY. And so we've put a, um, we've made, uh, the decision that they will not be automatically enrolled into NASHBY next year. And that we will have information and evenings where they can, or days where they can visit, uh, Leicester first and then, so that it's not an automatic thing that goes unseen.
My other question is, um, this current year, I, I see for next year you have a four or five combined class, but that doesn't look like it was always four or five combined. So are we, I know in, in previous years or in previous, um, previous talks, we don't like to keep changing the multi-age classroom just based on numbers. So I'm wondering if we did that here and if we should really be thinking to keep it like a three, four classroom or more, I, I just wanted to know if, you know.
I'll tell you, we did do that. Now you go.
I didn't want to throw her under the bus while she was up there.
Well, I just know, you know, it can be, it can be daunting to go from a single-
That's Brenda's brain. Okay, my brain is, goes in a different way. So this will be, as soon as, um, we get through the, the December break, then it will be sort of conversations with the OCA staff about creative scheduling, really sitting down and thinking about, you know, K6, picking apart the, all the pieces of their different programs that should be taught, um, that, what are the pieces that can be taught with a couple of different grade levels together? What are the parts that are really important to be taught at grade level? And then how, and then looking at the different numbers and then how can we creatively schedule, um, the, basically the entire school so that we can come up with something that works well exactly for the entire school? And it's really pulling them all together and saying sort of like, if it's not you this year, it could be you next year. So let's pull everybody together and think about how we do this really well.
Having been the administrator of small schools for 24 years, that's, that's the life, that's the life of a small school.
I also know that for students, it's hard being the lower class sometimes. It's also harder being the upper, you know, I'm, when I, my kids were in Sudbury, my youngest was the only kid in his class. And so when it was a one, two class and he was first grade, it was great because he was treated like a second grader. And when he was the second grader, he got left behind. So, you know, I just-
That's why we want to avoid that.
Yeah, which is interesting.
Well, that's what I'm trying, that's, I guess it's, so I just wanted to know the thought process behind moving those multi-age classrooms around.
Yeah, um, this was Brenda, eight o'clock, putting something out.
I wasn't going to say anything until later.
I, I had thought about putting them all together and saying five, two, but-
Well, I'm just looking at it. I mean, you could have had a fifth, sixth grade class of 23. That would be within our class sizes. You could add a three and four of 18, you know, you could even, I mean, there's lots of-
Stretching a one, two, but we could.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that can change, that will change.
So that's not, okay.
And can we look, since we're looking at class sizes, can we look at that first grade in NASHBY? I'm looking at the kindergarten that has the same number of students with two teachers. And I was just wondering what the thoughts were there.
Oh, that was, again, simplicity. So the, the kindergarten used to have three teachers. The teacher retired, so Brenda changed the FTE. It, you know, whether we would put three, you know, whether we have 33 come in and we would put three and have one to 11 again, and then we would increase the, the first grade to one to, uh, you know, two to 17.
The other option is maintaining that position listed there and just holding that position in case we have a large class come into existence somewhere in the district. And so it wouldn't necessarily be a person, but it'd be an FTE that we could unfurl if we need it. If we don't need it, then we just kind of pack it away.
And contractually, just for clarification, an elementary teacher in one school could be placed in a different school if needed?
It's by license.
I have a question about the educational quality standards.
Sure.
And that's why should we pay any attention to them whatsoever?
Yay, I agree.
Is there, is there, uh, are we going to be punished by the state for some, because if somebody in Washington decides they want a universal number that they can compare and somebody in Montpelier has to make them happy and they hire a consultant based in Florida or Texas or California?
Ohio.
Ohio, okay. That person's only knowledge of Vermont's based on Hallmark movies.
Christmas ones.
Wow, you watched the Hallmark show?
No, I haven't.
Okay, I just took it.
And, um, I watched one once and there was, they, they said, welcome to Vermont and they were on an eight-lane highway, so I stopped. Anyways, and then, you know, out of this process, we're told that one council for 64 kids in Otter Creek is a bad number. I mean, why pay any attention at all?
So this, so I guess the, the only reason why, well, we wanted this for information purposes. That this is the standard that when the state of Vermont creates the school snapshot, the accountability system for the state and for the supervisor union and for each of our individual schools, that when the numbers come back, that this is how they are judging us at some point. Eventually, the state's going to start talking about the Picas report, which would probably be even lower numbers than this. And so, um, we just wanted to have this as kind of, um, I guess, uh, food for thought as we, um, as we're doing our presentation so that you can see that in some cases, um, 11.25 is, was somebody's ideal, uh, class size for element, or teach, student to teacher ratio, not class size ratio, but ratio. And then I'm still, I'm coming from Texas, I, as much as I'd love to have that many administrators on my campus, I can't imagine having that many administrators on a campus.
Yeah.
But then also to see that, again, what we're, uh, expected to have is just bits and pieces of people based on our small schools.
Yeah.
And that is untenable. Uh, and so we will be judged down based on this particular snapshot category. And I would much rather make sure that we're looking after our kids, particularly in this day and age of the need of, of counseling than, uh, than, you know, to be told that, you know, you have too many. So.
So that means we won't have to look at that again?
No, I wouldn't say that because we're going to be, we'll be utilizing, uh, we'll certainly be utilizing the academic proficiency piece from the snapshot because that, I think, will get us to where, will put us in a position of where we need to be thinking about our students academically. Uh, because as much as I love talking about, uh, making sure that our students are receiving the, the services that they need, um, uh, through social emotional learning, I want to make sure that we're also talking about academics, uh, along the way. And as I mentioned earlier in the, uh, in the year about our budget will tells you who we are, um, I want to make sure that when people look at our budget, they can see that we're also focused on academics too.
But the interesting thing, right, is that this is the state's equality standards and at the same time we're being told, we cannot afford this, right? So we're told, this is what you would need to hold on, you know, what we're going to judge you against, but you can't afford it.
So this is something, once we pass, so once we pass our budget on town meeting day, and then after Brenda comes back from her month-long vacation, uh, that, uh, we are going to see how much, we're going to see if we can figure out how much this would actually cost us-
Cost, yeah.
-if we were to implement it, just so we can say, this is what according to the state of Vermont would be the ideal district, uh, cost in, or staffing at least in Vermont.
I'm curious to see how many schools would actually meet this in Vermont.
The bigger schools might.
Bigger ones, yeah.
Ten and Cal might have some.
Still, I think administrators, I don't think they'd ever meet the administrators.
Oh, no, no, nobody would have an administrator.
Included in, in this ideal cost, you've just made from Andrew's point, that, that this model would force us to have many more administrators and get rid of counselors.
Right. Right.
Yeah.
And there isn't a problem. Has there ever been a problem with having one principal at the elementary level? I mean, we have to look at our unique needs. So when I look at that pie in the sky chart, doesn't make sense to me to waste our time with it, but that's my opinion.
So I, in response to that question, I would say the principals are meeting compliance. And so that is not enough. Our kids need more than compliance. And so if they're-
They need more teachers in the classroom to meet their needs.
Well, we, we're pretty good according to this and according to, we're doing okay on teachers as well right now. But we need to make sure that our teachers are, um, that we're all going in the same direction. And so, uh, that's a piece that we will come back and talk about academic-wise.
I think it's important to note, it's not just numbers, it's actually going into these classrooms and seeing what's going on, especially in those early level classrooms.
I agree completely.
Okay. So one of the first items that you talked about was meeting the students' needs and also the survey talked about this district is very heavy with administrative spending.
Who said that?
That is a perspective of the survey.
You know, you need administrators, yes. Do you need all the assistants that go with them? That's what we really like to look at because in the town report, that information wasn't available.
What?
The town report, you know, who actually are the administrators, who, and I'm talking at central office, the administrators, all their assistants.
There's an org chart here, right? Yeah? I think it's on, it's on this.
You're also asking an RNSU question as opposed to an OVU question.
That's true. Well, and there, there is an organizational chart online.
And I would, I would urge you to come to the RNSU board, which meets tomorrow and ask that kind of question.
This was going to be, my question was in this area too.
In what area?
Well, uh, so our priorities, right?
Hundred slides up. One of them was to look at the central office, right? And I see that we're, we're looking at it and saying, okay, we want to right-size our classes, which apparently means reducing like six teachers. But, well, plus the high school. And, but we're not really looking at the RNSU level, right? Why do we choose to look at the class sizes and say, this is important, but we didn't look at, for example, what is a data manager? I don't know. Maybe it's super important, but I don't know what it is.
So that's an RNSU question?
It is, and we pay, what, 87% of that, so I think it's fair to ask.
Well, right, so you've asked the RNSU board to look at that, and, and all we did was look at the first budget last month, and so tomorrow night, we have to approve something, but we haven't seen a final, you know, if there's been any updates to that budget.
Sure. But your intent tomorrow is to pass a budget.
We have to, yes, in order to make sure that we have a budget for OVUU to put forth in January.
And I think one of the things that I've been pretty consistent about, complaining about in this meeting, is that I feel like RNSU always rushes their budget. It kind of feels like we're doing that again this year, because their increase is larger than what both of the other boards are seeing for increases. And I do think that the RNSU board should make sure to ask those types of questions, because why are we saying we don't need teachers, but we need, again, maybe a data manager is critically important, I don't know, but why are we saying that we need that over teachers? Or any other number of positions at central office? I don't want to call anybody out, but I mean, it does seem like there's some places there where maybe there's room to cut.
All right, one thing in that regard that I'd like to see is, I can't find the slide, but on the blue part on the right, there was a, there was an indication that grant-funded positions are expiring, but what they are.
That was my question. Thank you. That was what I couldn't remember.
The school safety position is, is ending. There is no additional funding for that, so that will be going away.
Is that an RNE?
That's an RNSU budget position.
Yeah, it's right there on us.
Are there any other grant-funded positions that are already expiring?
The other grant funds that we have are used to support interventionists, academic interventionists, that's how we spend our consolidated federal funds.
Yeah.
Or to support IEP needs. Or to support mental health, that's how we spend our Medicaid monies. So our IDEAB funds, Individual Disability Act Part B funds, are used to support special education, that's all you're allowed to support with those. Medicaid, we use to support clinicians at the schools. And then, the CFP funds, we use for professional development and for academic interventions.
So those are not going away? Those are, that's, that's.
No, because those grants are still there.
Right, those are annual entitlements that keep coming around.
That's what I thought.
So, we did reduce a coaching position. So there are annual retirements that continue to come around, but they stay about the same. And so, when you're buying staff and they're staying about the same, then they're essentially going down, because you can't buy the same level of staff. So we did reduce a, through attrition, we did reduce a coaching position, so that we would have enough resources to maintain all of the academic interventionists that were in the consolidated federal programs.
And that was a decision of making sure, because we are hearing really from our teachers mostly, that that they are, you know, wanting to make sure that we're keeping the positions that are connected the most closely to our students, which would be our interventionists, so. When we have a choice.
So that's another reduction that isn't really reflected there.
Yes.
To the RNSU.
At the RNE, right.
They have a lot of space on the slide.
I know. But that, I mean, I think that answers your question. I think I had that wondering, so that there's been a couple of reductions at that level.
We will talk about that tomorrow.
Other questions?
Is there any data out there on, you know, mixed-grade classrooms and the impacts on test scores? I mean, obviously, super small sample size, so it's probably impossible to really know, but it does feel like somebody's losing something.
So, probably within the district, we don't have that. We could, it would take a while to get it, but if you would like any more, I can, I can look something up for tomorrow, or for later, if that is something that y'all would like to see.
It really depends on the teacher and how strong they are. And in both grades and being able to, from my standpoint and from my kids having gone through that, it depends on how strong the teacher is and how well-versed they are. You don't want a brand-new teacher doing that by themselves.
It does seem like it'd be super hard, especially when you're talking kindergarten and first grade, because I feel like that's, there's a pretty big gap there.
It's probably harder in other grades. It's hard in any grade, I will tell you that.
I think it would also depend upon the layout, so if the, if that particular teacher has the same kids for multiple years, then the teacher can make sure that they're focusing on one set, one set of standards one year and the other set of standards the next year. But if they're having to teach both sets of standards each year, that would be really, really difficult.
And I think that, Brett, that's why when I mentioned that I was going to sort of connect with that school, it's really about making sure that we're not just leaving that teacher sort of by themselves, like to figure it out. It's thinking about how we're using all the resources in the entire school and all the little bits and pieces to have everybody work together. Unless you're talking, like Lori said, about, you know, you've got that teacher who really embraces it. Not that our teachers don't embrace, our teachers embrace a lot of things, we know that. But sometimes you will have a teacher that just loves it. And, you know, when you have that, they've been doing it for so many years, you may have a teacher that embraces multi-age, but when they, when that's not the case, then we really have to wrap around them and and help schedule, and it takes putting a lot of pieces of the puzzle together and wrapping around them in the whole school and scheduling creatively.
I sort of feel like we might be skirting a line that we don't want to be skirting, right, which is, there, there's two different ways we could go with this. We could say, either we're going to accept the added costs that comes with maintaining small class sizes and maintaining small schools, or we say, we want to prioritize class sizes, and then that has to translate into a conversation about facilities. And I, I'm not, I think we're doing the worst of both worlds right now, which is, we're trying to maintain maybe more classrooms in schools than we should, and then shuffling our class sizes around to try to make it fit. That doesn't seem like it's good for us or our children. I'm certainly not advocating that we close the school. I would actually say we should be going the other way and trying to maintain the right number of teachers versus the right number of class sizes of students per teacher. But if we're going down this road, when I look at this data, what does it say to me? It says that there's a much bigger conversation that needs to be had, and I don't know if we're ready to have it.
Start. I mean, if there's something that, I mean, you, like you said, you're skirting around it, so just say it.
I, well, as a small example, those four students, should they be going to Neshabie?
I wonder the same thing myself. I mean, I also wonder if those 10 kids that are coming into kindergarten at OCA should also be going to Neshabie, because if you only have 33 students coming in, you could keep three teachers at Neshabie, and you'd have 43, so you'd have one to 15 ratio, which is kind of where you want to be, and the four kids, I mean, but that does knock out your K1s out of a school, and once you knock that out, will you be replacing them in another year? You don't know that. But I am wondering that myself, and I guess that's why I asked about it. Now, as far as the other classrooms at OCA, I don't know that, you know, fourth and fifth grade, they're small, but I don't know that there's room anywhere to put them at this time, and we can look at, so that there isn't multi-age classrooms.
I don't know, at some point, there's a tipping point with the number of students in the district and.
Well, you don't, I mean, so you don't have enough to put Otter Creek into Neshabie, all of them.
Right.
And to be completely fair, I don't think that even though you have room at Lothrup, sending them from Lester all the way is too far. To be, I mean, if parents wanted to do that, absolutely fine, I wouldn't have a problem, but I think it's too far.
But if we're going to make that decision, then we also should be willing to have a classroom with four students in it and put a teacher in there.
Brenda?
I taught in multi-age schools for 32 years. They work. They can work. They're not necessarily adversarial to kids. It has to be trained, and there's a lot of information out there about the value of multi-age teaching. There's time that you don't lose, because when you have a new teacher every year, it's a, there's a four-week to six-week gap of the teacher getting to know that student that doesn't happen in multi-age classrooms. There's a lot of, a lot to be gained with the right training and the right mindset. And small schools are accustomed to being in that mindset. Now, I don't know the staff, I don't know how well-versed it is, I know very little about OCA to know whether or not that is where it's at, but I have been in schools where that works very well, and it does work even if you're changing and shifting throughout. But it requires a great deal of work and preparation and support, yes. A class size of four is not a healthy class size. And so, to, to put four students that might be incredibly diverse in need, it basically does not solve the problem, right? So, I don't think that the ideal is a teacher per class. I think that that's a faulty, faulty way of thinking about what works. I think what works is defining clearly what happens in a multi-age classroom and how you're not overextending a teacher into thinking that she's teaching two grades in one year. That can't happen. So it's, there is, there is some, some different, different type of teaching that needs to happen in a multi-age classroom that doesn't happen in a one-grade level classroom, but to be honest, you never get a grade with all the kids in the same level anyway, right? So, that idea of having to teach the child and not the level is one that really is universal, no matter whether you have a first-grade class, a fifth-grade class, or a four, five. I will say, it starts to fall apart if you put three grades together. That, that level of trying to accommodate, that range of need tends to fall apart. But a two-grade level combined class can work very successfully with the right level of support, the right numbers. And as Lori said, it has to be, you know, like if you have one child in one grade and 10 in another, it does, you have to really think about the needs of that one child, right, and with another being met in that group. But I don't think that that's the issue. I mean, I think you're right in that there's a bigger issue of, all our classes are still small, right? Like, you know, there is room for thinking about how do we create class sizes that are affordable and still healthy, but not without undoing communities. And that's where this gets really tricky, right? So, you can't tell, you know, why is it Lester, Whiting, and Sudbury that have to pay the price of having to go to a whole other community to be educated, because their class sizes are small? You know, if that's the responsibility of the whole system, then we have to look at the whole system. And where, where are the accommodations that can happen for kids to have the flexibility of, you know, being in the, in the right places and the right communities, right? So, it's, it's, it's a much bigger question than one that can be solved with, with one conversation or a meeting, right? And it's a, it's a big problem, but it's happening all over Vermont, too. This is, you know, I, I was at Sudbury for eight, you know, for what, 16 years?
10 years.
You know, that, that school no longer exists. So, just, I think it's a bigger problem, but I hear you in that, you know, there is, I think, all, most Vermont small schools are getting to that edge of like, you know, is it, is it good for kids to have group sizes of four? Is it group, you know, when, when you're dealing with groups that, in order to get 15 kids, you're having three grades, is that healthy? You know, that, then that starts to tip the balance, right?
And some of the other things that we haven't talked about, right? I mean, you know, access to a full gym, I mean, access to, you know, art programs and music programs and, you know, I don't know, the proper amount of, of support systems, right, like support professionals and it goes way beyond the classroom and.
Just so you know, none of our elementary schools have access to a full gym.
It's true.
None of them do.
We had a teacher who did want one.
Well, Act 46 was designed for us to make these decisions and take the heat for them, rather than the state. And maybe that's a good thing, because discussions maybe should be a local, and it seems to me that those standards I criticized earlier are also designed to force us in the same direction. You have to have a bigger school to have all of these services, and
which is why the data is somewhat leading, right, which is, I, you know, that's why I want to say the quiet part out loud, right? We all see this data, we see where it's leading somewhere. If we don't have the conversation and put it out in the open, then, then what?
Well, that's our data, but, you know, that's why I asked the question. What about all the other schools? Who, who would actually meet that data? Maybe Burlington, Williston, whatever, or, but, or Winuski, I meant Winuski, but maybe, maybe not, and so maybe that's when, you know, a bunch of us at the school board level get together and say, hey, none of us are meeting these EQSs, that it's not sustainable, we couldn't even fund it if we wanted to, and then they get changed.
And I could see why the state would put this out there. They've been pretty consistent about wanting to, you know, get education spending, quote-unquote, under control, whatever that means.
Yeah, right, they don't know what that means.
Well, that actually precede, those, those numbers actually preceded all of the budget issues.
Yep.
Yeah. But I think we have, we have a real fundamental question, which is sense of community, right? And people's attachment to their schools and the school district versus trying to chase numbers.
Well, you also, I mean, based on, on the gentleman's demography report, we are going to see decreased students in the next five years of 50 kids. And then beyond that, there'll be even more decreased numbers. So we're either going to have to find ways to consolidate with other schools and/or we're going to have to attrition ourselves down to Otter Valley, who knows? I don't know that, but, you know, those are, you know, we're not going to be able to go back to every town having a school, you know, it's, that ship has sailed.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, more towns are going to lose their small schools. We see it in Digger all the time. I keep reading about them fighting about South Hero and, and the other school up there are fighting about they're too small, pre-K, pre-K to six or whatever they are, and wanting to put them together, and they're fighting over which one's going to close. Because they both want to keep their schools.
And everybody does.
It's the heartbeat of a community.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's, you know.
Everybody says that, but, you know, and, you know, once, I just.
Once it happens, it doesn't feel that way. Right. But, by giving it up is, is incredibly difficult. You know, and I, how many years, all the years that I was at Sudbury, Sudbury Whiting kept talking about it, and they couldn't agree.
It is a heartbeat of community, though. It is, and just in the same way that everybody starts shopping at Walmart, and the downtown's wither, and you say, oh, things have changed, but you know, I have to drive a little farther to get my groceries or whatever. 15 years later, you wake up and say, what happened to our town? And the, the schools do the same thing. I mean, it seems like, oh, nothing, but, you know, what is, what is Sudbury anymore? I mean, I don't want to pick on Sudbury, but that, that, you, something was lost in that community when the school closed. A tightness, a knowledge of each other's lives, a place to go. Everybody shows up at the same night to look at their kids' artwork, that stuff disappears. And people don't notice it individually at a time, but it all adds up.
But I think we need to broaden our sense of community. You know, we need to not identify ourselves so much with one town as much as it is, you know, a community. A district, you know, if we could start to shift our thinking in that way of seeing ourselves here, you know, like, okay, so all our kids end up here, right? That sense of community by middle school and high school switches to Otter Valley. It's, it's no longer in your town, right? And it may change a little bit of the identity of the town, but, but you can find that community. but you can find that community with effort and with willingness. But it's just, it, it does shift.
I think I see it the opposite in some ways, right? I, I think people take pride in their community and whatever that is, right? I mean, I think we can change the school system, but I don't think that's going to change what people view as their community. You know, I, I'm, I'm from Pittsburgh, and I'm incredibly proud of the community in Pittsburgh. I think there's so many different tremendous things that they do to rise to the surface, right? And, and it all adds up to kind of create that sense of community. And it's the same in Brandon. It's the same in many communities, right? I mean, I don't know how we separate ourselves from that and not feel the effects of it at some point.
I hear that.
Um, I will say, I also live in Pittsburgh, and I was fortunate to go to Nashaby, but like, I live closer to the Proctor High School, and that's definitely closer to Pittsburgh. But like, I, I still definitely do highly identify myself with Brandon. And so I just feel like, like this is my community. I, people from Brandon, I do have a sense of community with, because we all go to school together. I, I know so many people in Brandon. And I think if, like, a couple of things were to shut down, I think that the community would sort of shift, because if, if there was a high school in Pittsburgh, let's just say, and that closed, and people had to go to Otter Valley, then, then that would be the community. So I do see what you're saying, but also I think that the community will shift with schools and like where there are community activities. Just from student perspective.
We are a community when there's a basketball game downstairs. I see a lot of you down there. We're all from different towns.
And it doesn't mean that you can't be from a town.
No.
Have town pride, and at the same time belong to multiple communities.
I think it's an interesting conversation as we go into this, talk about what the middle school model looks like, right? Because, I mean, if you were to ask me, is building a middle school the right answer? I probably would say no. I probably would say, if we're going to do it, let's just do the whole thing and-
Maybe, sure.
K through 12. I guess pre-K through 12.
You would have, you would have the economy of scale to have multiple gyms. Lots of, lots of electives for students, and the ability for students to meet people from across the area in a very large school. So a lot of things could happen as a result of that.
Yep. Well, we're not going to decide it tonight, and this is-
Just to be clear, I'm not moving here anymore because kindergarten is.
Apparently. I don't know. We'll, we'll have to talk about that later, I guess. But, um-
I'm going pre-K.
I know. You cannot have that cubicle anymore.
Last month, Barbara's time out.
So I think it boils down to that, that this is a budget that we need to reflect on. We're going to see it at least two more times before it's finalized anyway. Possibly three, actually. Yeah, we usually meet three times in January to go over this budget. And so between now and January, whatever date we're meeting, I don't know what date is, seven?
It's a Tuesday, seven.
Oh, yeah, January 7th, there is. You know, if you think of different questions or whatever, shoot them out to Renee or myself or Brenda. Actually, if you're going to shoot it to one, shoot it to all three, just so that we're all on the same page. And, you know, we can talk about different scenarios. But-
I have one more big question. I don't know if you got any data on this, Renee or not, but is there, Vermont's model in general of people retiring from New York, New Jersey and coming here, everyone knows it's unsustainable. And so Vermont sees they're going to become more depopulated over the next 25 years, so there's going to be more immigration. And immigration always follows the same pattern in American history. Men come first, and then women and children follow. There's a great study of Jews in Burlington. That's exactly what happened. And you can, you know, every ethnic group. So my expectation is that at some point, we're going to see more Hispanic immigration into Vermont. The men are already starting to be here. Women and children will follow. Do we have any sense how those numbers are going to be shaped over the next 20 or 30 years? And, and should we be thinking more about bilingual education?
I think we should think about bilingual education.
I think we should be thinking about bilingual education.
So, so let me answer the, the last part of your question first.
Yeah.
So in today's presentation, you saw that we made mention of our multilingual teacher that has, that is, has a piece from every school.
Yeah.
In Vermont, typically, multilingual teachers do pull up, and that's a strategy. But frequently, schools will provide the necessary training to general education teachers so that they can provide many of the services that multilingual students are, need on a daily basis. So there is a potential that we could reconfigure her position so that she provides that training as well as provides the services to the students. So, yes, we're thinking of that. We're thinking of that piece, just because it's good practice, because those strategies help every student, not just multilinguals. The other, the, the second piece is, I haven't seen that, but I have observed that there are a lot more Latino men in Vermont than there was when I first arrived here four years ago. I, myself, am one. But that has nothing to do with it. But the other piece is that if your, my, if your migration thoughts are true, then it's going to start happening sooner, sooner rather than later, and it, but they're, and they're going to go where the jobs are. And so it just, but the question will be, is there housing? If there's no housing, it's going to be really difficult for them.
It's actually already happening.
Can I, I, I'm sorry.
It's actually already happening. I do know of, of work that's available here in town, but they can't find housing.
So I, I, my other job is to be multilingual liaison for Addison Central District. I, the women and children are coming, are here. I have multiple families right now that I am serving that have children in schools in Addison Central School District. And that model of pushing in and training teachers to be able to help, it's, it's already happening. Most of the jobs right now that people are coming to provide housing, but not necessarily for families. So it totally depends on the type of job that they're having. So it hasn't, it's starting to drift into Brandon, that jobs are happening and that people are, are coming. But it's, Addison County has hundreds and hundreds of migrants that are currently living and working in Addison County, and including families.
These things often tend to happen, seem to have happened. In Brandon, I know, between eight, I think it was between 1840 and 1850, Brandon went from 100% Yankee, that is, New England Protestants, to 25% Catholic. They were, they were Irish and, and French Canadian immigrants. And at the time, you know, when I always say, oh, what difference does that make? But at the time, that was a hugely disruptive thing. And I don't see-
What brought them?
Jobs. Well, there was a, I really want to hear all this. There was an economic crisis and a revolt, and Quebec, that drove, drove the French Canadians, and the Irish famine drove the Irish.
Okay, thank you.
But also stoneworkers, right? Were they? Was that before? Stoneworkers?
Was that, was that Italians into Rutland, West Rutland?
The, 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 the.
Bear and bear, okay.
I can bore you with the stoneworkers for a very long time.
Okay, getting back to the budget. Sorry.
But, but, yeah. But anyway, I do think that, that it will be important to have a model that works. And definitely, one teacher to address all the needs of all the children in this district, in all of the schools, is going to probably be too little eventually.
Good discussion to be having, that's for sure.
Yeah.
In honestly, it's right now, because there are five schools across about 60 miles, you know, and you had to do the whole loop. So one teacher is still, you know, and that's the other thing that EQS doesn't look at or talk about, is when you share, you lose instruction time because the teacher is traveling to a different, a different environment. We do our best to try to keep that down, but we still have to get from one school to the next.
Okay. Any other questions about this budget right now? No, I-
I just like the way you put that.
You know, only like right now?
Right now.
Right now, yeah. Okay, so hearing none, we are going to move on. Like I said, if you come up with a great idea or have questions, please send them, and we'll, we'll do our best to address them for the next meeting. All right. I had this put on from last meeting, which was the OVU annual district report. I need to write that for our annual report that goes out to taxpayers and community members in January. So what is it you would like me to put in there? I would like to put in there something about the legislature and the fact that they did not do what they needed to do this year. But is there some things that we have done that we need to let community members know, or that we should let them know?
Yeah, I think we should, I think it's fair to say that we are trying to be more deliberate with the budget, that, that they have plenty of time to get, let their opinions be known to us.
Yeah.
And, yeah, those two things.
Okay.
I think the state could save a certain amount of money by getting rid of whoever comes up with these calculations for-
Someone is very much trying to justify their position by changing the calculation every year.
That's not what I'm going to tell people. But, yeah.
I don't know. Do you highlight things that have happened that are, that are-
Yeah, some things that have happened. I mean, I can, I can highlight the mold issue and that it's been mostly eradicated.
I was thinking draw on music, but mold also works.
Right. I'd like to focus on something more positive than that.
Definitely the facility committees that you're on.
Oh, right, yeah, okay.
And also, I mean, are we still looking for people to be a part of those?
Well, I just am waiting for people that I'd asked, or that you guys had asked me to ask, to find out if they're going to do it.
I mean, we did the budget survey. We had good participation. That's something to throw in there. We have, you know, strong sports programs. It did sports ball this fall and did well, it seems, yeah. I know field hockey and football, right?
Yep, they did really well.
They did well.
We need to get our boys' baskets, our boys' soccer team back.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
Debate club.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Our very first debate, and, and the debate team of Rivera and McLaughlin won first place, correct?
Oh, wow!
Yes, they did. The very first debate in Birmingham last weekend. Congratulations.
Nice! Yeah, I need to hear more about that.
So how come we don't hear any debate when you're here? Oh, you're observing. So that's how you got first place. Okay.
They're gathering data.
They're learning what not to do.
Okay, there we go.
You guys talked to, have you guys talked to the reporter? Have you talked to Stephen Jupiter at the reporter?
No.
Okay. You should. There should be an article. This is the first I'm hearing about it, and I'm on this board, so.
Yeah, yeah, we have, do have more. The next one's the 11th of January.
That's very, very cool. Yes.
They're pretty far away.
Yeah, I think it might also be VBA.
They're always like an hour and a half away.
But I can send that to you.
Stephen's going to hate me.
That's great.
I also learned how to whistle recently.
Oh, I'll make sure I address that here. Okay, thank you for that. All right, never mind. I don't want any more of your help. I'll figure it out. All right. All right. So one of the things Melinda wanted me to do was confirm a January candidate info session and special meeting, which normally means that if anybody is thinking about running for the board, they come to this candidate info session. Normally, nobody shows up, but she has tentatively scheduled it for Tuesday, January 14th at 5:30 here at the Otter Valley Library. So if you want to let people know, for anybody who's thinking about running for, for the offices to come, that would be great. We'll talk about what we do here. And if anybody's not running for their seat, please let me know so that we can start looking for people to fill that seat as well. And remember, we're still looking for that elusive Whiting member. Other than that, we have, our next meeting is Tuesday, January 7th here at 6:00 PM. And for negotiations, do we need executive session now, or are you guys not at that place? Can you wait till after your next? Don't think to share? Okay. All right, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:08.
I see.
Move.
Second. Okay, goodbye.